December fifteenth, city council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Major Bob Parker, area commander of the Salvation Army Birmingham area, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here today and to offer this invocation. This week, the Salvation Army will distribute over twenty thousand gifts to almost six thousand children here in Birmingham. Those gifts will surely bring a smile on Christmas morning, and it's wonderful to know that these children will have a fond memory of Christmas this year. And we all have those memories of Christmases gone by, of gifts given, and gifts received that have special meaning to us. And this morning, as we pray, I think of the greatest gift ever given, the gift by a father of his only son to the world, so that whoever believed in him could have everlasting life. Please join me in prayer. Father, as we consider the many gifts that will be exchanged in the next couple of weeks, those coming from loved ones and given to loved ones, those coming from anonymous donors and those given to those we care about, help us to remember the greatest gift given on the very first Christmas. When your son came to earth to be born as a babe, God in the flesh, Emmanuel, born in a stable amidst the messiness and unpleasantness of life, with the noise and smells that such a place provides, help us to remember that still today, you come to us wherever we are, in the busyness of life, and you come as the prince of peace, and you offer comfort and joy. At this busy yet glorious time of the year, Father, I thank you for these, your servants who sit on this council, for those who provide good and godly leadership to our city. I ask for your Christmas blessing on them and their families, and on all who call this great city home. Guide these men and women today as they make decisions that will make our city greater. And Father, may we begin this day and journey through this Christmas season filled with the wonder of Mary, the obedience of Joseph, the joy of the angels, the eagerness of the shepherds, the determination of the Magi, and the peace of the Christ child. In his name, I offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Morning. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Good morning.
Morning.
Present. Um, let me go back. All right, the, we have a motion on the minutes from September eighth and September fifteen.
I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson, ready to vote.
Voting should be up. Councilmember Hoyt and Abbott.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
That vote should be up.
That item passes. The minutes are not ready from September twenty-second through December the eighth. Um, communication from the mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
This Friday at seven a.m., we will be hosting. This Friday at seven a.m., we will be hosting another health walk. Here to give us more information about the walk is Ms. Janice Thompson with U A B Health Smart. Janice?
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
I want to take this opportunity again to say thank you so much again. I'm Janice Thompson from the U A B Minority Health and Health Disparity Center, and this is Bianca Hawke. We have been, over twenty-five years, I know I have been, out here on a journey, trying to figure out how to get our community healthy, and we join forces with the mayor of the Healthy Birmingham Task Force. And for the last forty-five months, we have been doing walks throughout the city, because, and I want to thank the city of council members that's joined us so far in the walks, and we are here today because the mayor will be downtown Birmingham, in the city center, on this Friday morning at seven o'clock, to do a walk in Birmingham, in the city center. And these walks are intended to let people know that, yes, our communities are safe enough to walk. And what makes them safer, if we decide to go back out as groups of people and take claim of our streets again, and at the same time find it makes us healthier. Because if adding, if you are sedentary and you add one, go from one thousand to ten thousand steps, do you know that it can cut your life expectancy about fifty percent? You can live longer, at least, because if not, then what ends up happening is that you become unhealthy. Also, it helps, uh, you, it doesn't cost anything if you walk. And so, we are here to encourage you to join the mayor on Friday morning at seven o'clock at U A B Health Smart downtown, that's three oh one twentieth street, and we only walk for probably about an hour. It's an hour walk, and you walk at your own pace. So, we want to encourage you to join us on that walk. And the walk will end up back at Health Smart, which is a health and wellness center, and it's not only a one-time event, because what we do at the U A B Health Smart Wellness Facility is that we're there on the corner of Third Avenue and twentieth street. Anyone can walk in our door, from the little lady that gets off the bus, to the business person that comes out of a business office and get wellness screenings done. Also, they can join continuous walk teams. And we want to start the downtown walking bus route as a result of this kickoff that the mayor is doing at the Health Smart Wellness Center on this Friday. So, we encourage all of you to come and join us at seven o'clock on Friday morning at U A B Health Smart, and the address again is three oh one twentieth street north. We will be there at seven o'clock, and you can walk as long as you want to walk, and then return back to your jobs. But we are here to try to make sure that we get every person in the city of Birmingham healthy, and do it as cost-effective as we can, because we want to add years to your life. Anything, Bianca, you want to say? Thank you all so much. Good morning.
Good morning, Auntie.
Janice, appreciate that. Uh, today at the Boutwell Auditorium, uh, we have law enforcement officials from around the state. Uh, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of between eleven hundred and thirteen hundred, uh, individuals who have signed up for the active shooter training that is taking place there at the Boutwell Auditorium. Uh, it's an unfortunate sign of our times, but we are joining with the FBI, federal, state, and local agencies to be sure that we are as prepared as possible for this sort of event. And I want to thank the, um, Special Agent in Charge Stanton, along with the Citizens Academy, the FBI Citizens Academy, uh, for making it possible to have this training here in Birmingham. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you have any speakers? Uh, any councilmen who wish to address the mayor? All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready to move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
Uh, we didn't have no nominations to board the agencies.
Okay.
All right, the consent agenda starts on page two with item one being added, and the remaining items two, three, four, and five are on consent. Page three, items six, seven, and eight are designated as consent items. On page nine, we have items nine and ten on consent. Page ten, items eleven, twelve, and thirteen were added to consent. Please note that item twelve was recommended by Economic Development as well as the Budget and Finance Committee.
You said item eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
That is correct.
Um, okay, item eleven and thirteen, I think, were delayed. So.
We had three council meetings prior to coming in. I'm just noting what was on.
All right. We take those off consent, eleven and thirteen. Go ahead.
Page eleven, items fourteen and fifteen are on consent, were added to the consent agenda, also recommended by Budget and Finance as well as Economic Development, both items. And on item fifteen, the amount should be three million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. That same notation should be made in the third page of the resolution as well. Three million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Item sixteen is not on consent, but it should be withdrawn, just for future reference. And then on page twelve.
Okay, it was withdrawn.
Item seventeen should be withdrawn, and items eighteen and nineteen are on consent, with nineteen being added. Page thirteen, items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are on consent. Page fourteen, items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are on consent.
On item twenty-four, we just need to make sure that it's on the council's District Four discretionary funds in the resolution. Is that correct?
Is it noted in the resolution? We need to change it if it's not?
Amended to just. Yeah. And/or.
Strike the and/or.
Right. And just put District Four discretionary.
You can provide us with them. All right, we have that. Page fifteen, items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are on consent. Page sixteen, item thirty-four is on consent. Item thirty-five should be withdrawn, not just from the consent, but from the agenda. Items thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine are on consent. Page seventeen, items forty, forty-one, and forty-two are on consent. Page eighteen, item forty-three should be withdrawn from the agenda, as well as the consent withdrawn from the agenda, item forty-three.
Item forty, what now?
Forty-three should be withdrawn.
Okay.
Items at forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six are on consent. Page nineteen, item forty-seven is on consent, and items forty-nine and fifty were added. Please note on item fifty, you should strike purchasing agent from item fifty. Strike purchasing agent.
Okay.
Page, I didn't know my, I think we added one, did we? No?
I don't have any.
Item fifty-two is on consent. It should be, they're all around.
I see it, yeah.
They're also loaded on your computer.
Okay. All right, Council Scales.
Yes, on page seventeen, item forty-one, I wanted to make sure before this remains on consent. Mr. President, if I may ask Mr. Willis about this particular piece of property, is that okay? Because if it's not what I have in mind, then it can remain on consent.
You can ask.
Mr. Willis, uh, is this the vacant property that's on Sun Hill Road, right by Jeff State Community College, that the gentleman had come before the council to, it's about a multi-family dwelling, basically, the apartments that were supposed to be repaired?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so, we're giving him another permit?
He didn't pick up the first permit. He went to P I C last week and requested his first permit.
No, this, this particular gentleman, a Caucasian gentleman that came about the, uh, those apartments on Sun Hill Road?
Yes.
Across from Brown Church, because they're vagrants that are living in, in, in there now. There are some people that are living there illegally, and in fact, they are stealing the utilities there. So, I'm interested in knowing why we would permit something that has illegal activity going on at the property. Okay, Mr. President, can we leave it off? Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. I didn't know if you knew that.
All right. Are any other members of council which should speak to it? Item has been placed on the consent agenda. Councilor Rafferty?
I'd like to move, remove item nineteen.
Item nineteen, okay. All right. All right, are there any other members of the public, are there any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? There any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. Morning.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'd just like to speak from the last matter that was addressed.
Which item?
Item forty-one.
Hold on one second. It's not on consent right now. It's not on consent. So, you can have a seat on the front row or have a seat, and we'll, we'll discuss that item. All right. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing?
Have we passed it?
Not yet.
Okay. Could we add, uh, six?
Six is.
It's on consent.
Already on there. Yeah, it's on. Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay. All right. We have a mover and a second on the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson.
All right, voting should be up. Councilman Tyson. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item.
Should be item eleven?
Yeah, call up item eleven, item eleven and thirteen.
Item eleven, in ordinance to further amend the general fund budget by appropriating five hundred and nineteen thousand, thirty-six dollars and fifty cents to non-departmental economic development incentives, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents to Festival Center LLC, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to V A Clinic, Graham and Company, and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to Luden Lane, per economic incentive agreement, funding source being additional sales tax received and miscellaneous revenue.
Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, in ordinance to further amend the general fund budget by appropriating a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Hold on one second. Let's move for a recess, Mr. Clerk.
Motion, please.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I want a favorable lady to be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I want to oppose.
We convene the chair. We rolling? All right, Mr. Clerk. Yes. Microphone.
Parker.
Morning.
Morning. Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present, good morning. All right, Mr. Clerk, we're on item eleven. I think you were reading thirteen.
Okay.
Did you finish reading it?
I don't know. All right, thirteen. It's on page ten. In ordinance to further amend the general fund budget by appropriating a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to non-departmental transfer to Fund One oh two capital improvement, and to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by appropriating a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to Maxway Roof Repair. Said funding source being miscellaneous revenue received from BP Oil Settlement.
All right. Move to refer these to Economic Development Budget and Finance Committee.
Let's do the regular motion first.
Regular motion.
Get them on the table, yeah.
Move item. Second.
All right. And then.
Make the motion refer to the committee, Economic Development Budget and Finance.
Move the second. Can I get a second?
We have a second.
Yes, Hoyt.
Okay. And that's Economic Development?
Economic Development Budget and Finance Committee.
All right, voting should be up. And we're missing nobody. All right, that vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Where do we go here?
Should be.
Sixteen, seventeen withdrawn.
Nineteen.
And so, we go to nineteen. A resolution approving the agreement with A D A H International Incorporated in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the period October the fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to October the fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, to provide professional consulting services to identifying target and development relationships with European companies and multipliers in international trade shows and delegations, and coordinate meetings with the mayor, city councilors, and/or city staff in person or via conference call, as needed, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Move the item. Second. All right. Council Rafferty?
Yes, I noticed on page three, item two, under terms, the standard language is not there, um, since this contract goes, uh, further than one fiscal year. And I needed to ask the Law Department about that.
Yes, I understood this to be a, uh, a lump sum payment. If it's to be extended over a period of time, I can add that language in.
This is a one lump, one lump sum payment. At what time?
Within thirty days following submission of aid.
I'm just looking at it being a two-year contract over three fiscal terms. I'm just trying to understand the accountability on this.
Right, if it were to come.
Usually, there's standard language in there.
If it were to, if the appropriation were to be paid out of multiple years, um, it would have that language in there. If it's to come out of, in one payment, uh, that language wouldn't necessarily be in there, but I'd be, I'd be glad to add it if you want me to.
Okay, and then let me ask you another question. Um, is there anything in here, and since we were just handed this contract a little while ago, um. No, it was just handed to us. Oh, okay. Okay. Um, my question is, it has to do with accountability over the three years, if we're paying for it upfront for three years. Is that established in the contract to your satisfaction? Or to the Law Department's satisfaction?
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating?
Compliance. If we're paying for this upfront for three years, how do we keep the checks and balance on? We are getting what we paid for. Bianca, Mr. President?
We are not paying for it over a period of three years. The contract was just as others that are multiple contracts, that, multiple-year contracts, that, uh, the next year is, the language becomes as funding is available.
But it's not in here. That's what I was.
Well, the Law Department did write this, so we went by what Mr. Roberts provided to us upon asking.
Which was my initial question, and Mr. Roberts stated it was one lump sum to be paid. Is this, and is this amount to be paid on an annual basis? Yeah, three a.
But that council, let me just say this, that's not what the, the contract says. In that section that you just referenced, section, uh, item three on page three, it says, "In consideration of aid of services pursuant to this contract, the city will pay a professional service fee of forty-one thousand dollars per quarter, beginning with the month of October fifteenth, due by the fifteenth, the first of each quarter." It also says it will be reimbursed for expenses that, that ten thousand, and will be billed directly, the city will be billed directly.
So, I have to come back to the initial, initial section, the verbiage on page three, item two, term. The standard language that we put in there, subject to availability of funds.
Yeah, you just want to put that.
That language is missing.
Just put, we can just put that at the end if, if the council agrees to it. Yeah.
And that's all I was asking.
Just ask.
I'll take care of that.
Just slide it in there.
Yeah. Yeah. It's good. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Ms. Dees?
Okay.
She got it.
All right. Council Abbott.
This did bring up another question. In three A, on page three, it says that we'll pay them forty-one thousand dollars per quarter. And this item is for a total of forty-one, not to exceed forty-one, seven thirty-seven. So, what are we paying them per quarter? Are we dividing it up by the three years and paying them quarterly a portion of forty-one thousand dollars? Because this says we're paying them forty-one thousand per quarter. That's not right.
That's not the contract.
I think this thing needs a little work.
We're not looking at the same thing that you are.
What are you looking at? What does yours say, Mr. Dillon?
Um, I had.
You want to look at what I'm looking at?
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars per quarter, beginning October, um, fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah. Let's move for a one-week delay.
So, I'll move.
Do you have a second? Second. Abbott, Hoyt, we're ready to vote on a one-week delay. We just need to get with the Law Department, because we, I don't know what this is.
All right, voting should be up. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes for one-week delay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Let's see, item thirty-five should be withdrawn.
Item forty-one.
And then we skip to item forty-one. Item forty-one is on page seventeen. A resolution authorizing the director of planning, engineering, and permits to issue a condemnation repair permit to and add Junior Investments LLC, attended West Sims. The owner or agent of the property located at ten forty-four Sun Hill Road, Birmingham, five hundred, Birmingham, which was condemned by the council December the first, two thousand and fifteen, and orders to remove the weeds and the trash from the premises within ten days of permit issuance, and to commence and make substantial repairs within thirty days of permit issuance, no previous permits having been requested.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
President, I, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson, Council Tyson.
Yes, I wanted to, um, I know our council, councilwoman Scales had a question about this. But it's the uni, it's the units of apartments that he repaired, the first, it's, it's the first unit that's already has been repaired. Then he turned around and he purchased, uh, number, the building number five. And he's, uh, building, uh, repairing that unit, and he's going to tear down, down the one in between, right? Uh, and I actually went out there. So, it did come through the P I C committee, and there's no one staying in those buildings since he has purchased those buildings. He actually cleaned it. They gutted them all out, and tore out all the windows, and actually, the, um, there are project managers here in the audience, if y'all wanted to ask them any questions.
Do you have any questions? We're ready to vote. Mr. Clerk, we have a mover and a second.
Voting should be up.
Thank you, Council Tyson.
Councilmember Hoyt.
What we doing?
Voting.
Voting on the item.
We're voting.
Council Tyson gave us a positive report, a favorable report.
That, that vote should be up.
This item passes. Next item.
Item forty-three has been requested to be withdrawn. Should be next, should be forty-eight.
Yeah, call up item forty-eight, fifty-one, um, fifty-five.
Item forty-eight, a resolution approving the following expense account, quantity car. Quaney Carson, assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, San Francisco, California. Three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and two cents, October the fourth through the eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend two thousand and fifteen Urban Land Institute Fall Meeting. Item fifty-one, a resolution prob- approving the following advanced expense account. April Odom, director of communications, Wa- mayor's office, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, December the fifteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend congressional meetings. And you said fifty-five, which is on the addendum. A resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. William Parker, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-three cents, December the fifteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the Environmental Protection Agency congressional meetings. James Roberson, councillor, Pro Tem, city council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand two hundred and five dollars and ninety-seven cents, December the fifteenth and sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend congressional meetings.
Go move. Second.
Alright. Roberson? Parker? Do you have any speakers? We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Alright, voting should be open. Bring on the bench, gentlemen. Counsel member Tyson is out. Counselor Scales is out. That vote should be up.
Alright, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Where do we go, fifty-three?
Uh, we have, where is it? Fifty-three and fifty-four.
Fifty-three and fifty-four. Fifty-three is on the addendum. An ordinance to amend the business license code of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three. As amended, to add an additional NAICS subsector and corresponding license schedule for other transit and ground passenger transportation companies to Article One, Schedule of Business Licenses, NAICS Sector four eighty-five, Transit and Ground Passenger Transportation.
And item fifty-four?
An ordinance to amend the business license code of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three. As amended, to add an additional NAICS subsector and corresponding license schedule for taxi, limousine, and other transit and ground passenger transportation driver companies to Article One, Schedule of Business Licenses, companies to Article One, Schedule of Business Licenses, NAICS Sector four eighty-five, Transit and Ground Passenger Transportation. I need you see to pass today.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I need a motion now.
Alright.
Move the items.
Second.
Alright, um, the first item, item fifty-three, is, um, we just need to make sure that it's ten thousand attorney instead of eight. And I think we're okay with that one. This is the TNCs, yeah. It's just amending the, uh, business license code. The first one. The second one is- is not. That's no good. The second one requires, uh, each individual, it's in Schedule four- four, forty-eight, fifty-three. Each individual primarily engages in providing passenger transport as a driver of an automobile or van, or provides a rate. It says, um, uh, shall not operate over regular hours and rate, shall pay a license in the amount of sixty dollars. Uh, and I think that that is something that needs to be handled through, um, the TNCs, but we can discuss both of them if y'all have any questions. But I know that the first one, item fifty-three, it needs to be amended to reflect ten thousand and not eight. You got that, Mr. Bim? Heard what I said? The first item, item fifty-three? Oh, there you go.
Yolanda Lawson from the Law Department. Um, Counselor Austin, in- in reviewing the TNC ordinance that was previously passed and working with the Department of Fin- Director of Finance, I'm sorry, Mr. Barnett, we determined that there is a requirement for a permitting fee as well as a business license. And so we're working on the permitting fee. And the business license was changed to reflect eight thousand dollars. Now, the permitting fee is still outstanding. We have not established- excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm fighting the call. Established the terms and the requirements, and who will manage the permits and issue the permits, but that fee will be reflected, or the difference in that fee will be reflected at that time.
And that's the two thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. At that time, that's what we're discussing now.
So, let me make sure I understand this. The eight thousand is for a TNC such as Uber?
Business license.
For the business license?
Yes, sir.
And then the two thousand would be the permit that also a TNC such as Uber would be responsible for purchasing as well?
Yes, sir, and that's- that will reflect the- the ordinance that this council passed a couple of weeks ago.
But you all don't have that one, you just have the eight thousand?
Yes, sir. Right now, we just have the eight thousand.
Okay. And then for item fifty-four? That is the license for, um, the individual drivers that-
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bim was referring to last week.
Yes, sir. It's our understanding that the Uber drivers will be independent contractors, and as independent contractors, we view them as a business or taxpayer. And constitutionally, we are requiring that all businesses that- or taxpayers that operate within the city of Birmingham hold a business license or acquire a business license. And this would be their business license, that we are expecting each individual driver to purchase.
Okay. Alright, do you have- Counsel Abbott?
Yeah, I just, I- I wasn't really- I understand that everybody who does business in our city has to have a business license. I under- that part's pretty easy to understand. I s- I guess I missed something on the change of the ten thousand to eight thousand? Explain that again, please.
The ordinance that was passed by this council requires a permitting fee be paid. And there are some things that we need to clarify and clear up with the ordinance that was passed, and there may be some additions to that ordinance to make clarifications for any TNC that may come into the city of Birmingham.
Okay.
With that permitting requires a fee. And wi- through our discussions so far, we're contemplating charging that extra two thousand dollars as the fee. And lowering the business license to eight thousand dollars.
Okay, why can't we just make the business license ten thousand dollars and be done with it and pretend like it's a permit?
Well, we can't pretend like it's-
Or call it a permit. Can we just go back and amend the ordinance that we passed last week to call it a business license fee? Or can we just take that section out?
No, ma'am, we cannot.
Since it's- since you- everybody has to have a business license, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've got a schedule of business license fees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
He does, Mr. Barnett?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so why does it even need to be in the ordinance?
Well, that's something that the council, I guess the maj- as a majority, would have to make that determination if that's something that they want to do, but we would have to go back to the table and- and look at the ordinance as a whole and make the determination if there needs to be a permitting fee, because the city of Birmingham will have to do some portions of the processing, if you will, for the TNCs.
Ma'am, go ahead. The- the scheme that we follow in permitting people, uh, to use the, uh, the streets and sidewalks and so forth for commercial purposes requires a permitting fee. That- that is how we've treated other activities. So, it would make sense, in our normal scheme of operation of administration, to have a permitting fee as well as a business license. All- all this does is just-
Okay.
Keep us within the same scheme that we normally operate in.
Now, I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
That- I thought we were substituting one for another by a different name. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Counsel Rafferty?
Yeah, and the other thing I wanted, when we amended or changed the code in two thousand and twelve, the business license was not part of the code. The business license is a separate entity unto itself, and when we passed the per- and established the permit fees in the code, that did not absolve the business license. So my question is, we've established under the passing of the ordinance a ten thousand dollar permit fee.
Yes, ma'am.
The same as the other i- in the code, also all the other transportation entities have a permit fee in addition to a license fee. So why are we- these should be two separate items. So if you're gonna- i- if it establishes the permit fee at ten thousand dollars and you- and you're going to be- because we- the council, although we amended for the license code, we did not- we can't dictate what the license code says. It has to go through the standard of NAIS, is that correct?
It wa- has to meet the- the criteria for the NAICS.
Okay, so that would be a separate item to the permit fee that's established in the code. You can't peel part of that off and make it a business license, so are you looking at coming back and amending the ordinance so that you adjust the permitting fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And it will be presented as two separate items, it's just we were not able to come to terms on the permit prior to today.
Got it, thank you.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Roth, you come up here. You all had a chance to look at this.
Yes, I'm Toby Roth. I'm from Montgomery, represent Uber in the state of Alabama. I received the draft of this last night at seven o'clock and forwarded it, uh, to my client. We've had a brief conversation last night and a little more conversation this morning. Um, and we do have some serious concerns about both of these separate provisions, both item fifty-three and fifty-four. On fifty-three, regarding the fee, I understand there's some math, or should I say division, um, going on of that- of that fee, and we're- we're- I think we understand where that's headed, and we can certainly, I think, work through that and that allocation between a business license and a permit. Item fifty-three also contains language requiring the TNC to submit a detailed driver list to the city, including name, contact information. That is very problematic for the TNC business model because driver list is a valued asset, a proprietary asset of the company. Understanding the city's policy objective and other cities' similar policy objectives, that is why we have, uh, had agreed upon terms, uh, of an audit process wherein a city can come in and audit to make sure that the driver records are in order, but it would not create a- a information item, a database at the city, which would be subject to an open records request from a competitor, um, who would view that driver list as very valuable. Um, the second item, I believe it's fifty-four, uh, speaks to the individual business licenses. Um, and as we have said from the beginning, we think that individual business licenses for the drivers is problematic. It can become very cumbersome and an impediment to getting the number of drivers onboard to create the supply for the demand that we would see here. So in the alternative, we have, in trying to address the city's objective, we have been looking for a, what I would call, a master or omnibus type license or permit which Uber would hold, and then do all of the things, um, required of getting the driver's background information and everything else as part of that process for the individual drivers. So, both of- I've outlined those concerns, but we'd be glad to talk about those in more detail.
Counsel Parker?
I'm just trying to get clarification, so what the Law Department is indicating of their concerns is in conflict with what Mr. Roth-
Yes.
-is saying? Okay. So, are we just gonna probably let them get together and meet and work through their issues, or?
Yeah, I mean-
I- I- I wasn't talking.
Very good.
I'm fine with that. If that's- I mean, if that- you all can do that.
Because it- because it appears like-
They just need to talk about it.
I- I think there needs to be some communication, but, okay, but we're here to- to represent the citizens, so if that's better, we could just lay it a week or-
Make a motion for a one-week delay?
Is that enough time for everyone to?
That's fine.
Okay, yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Parker, Abbott, we're ready to vote on the one-week- Counsel Rafferty, um, on these two items. Go ahead, Counsel Rafferty.
Yes, um, uh, if I could ask the Revenue Department, is this limited, um-
Law Department.
I'm sorry, no.
She's the law department.
Uh, actually, I needed to ask you. On, um, the- on the second item before us, does that pertain to exclusively TNC drivers or all transportation drivers?
It will apply to all transportation drivers, taxi cab drivers, limousine drivers.
Non-emergency medical shuttles, pedicabs-
Yes, ma'am.
Or strong carriages. So, basically, instead of charging the individual companies a business license of sixty dollars, we're going to a driver-by-driver business license understanding rather than a company driver's li- uh, I mean, I'm sorry, not driver's license, um, business license.
Well, what is gonna come out to be, Counsel Rafferty, is it's going to be- we're going to charge the individual drivers a business license. If there is a taxi cab company, for example, that has- that owns vehicles that drivers may use, we will still have a license for those vehicles as well. But the individual drivers, that's their- their- that's their business license.
Because they're independent contractors?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready to vote. It's for a one-week delay for items fifty-three and fifty-four.
So, what is-
Just a delay, one-week delay.
Okay.
That vote should be up.
That item passes for a one-week delay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, I think that concludes the regular-
Speakers, move the spin rule, Congress.
Got it, ladies. One second, please.
Alright. Okay, Olivia Thompson?
Ms. Thompson?
Good morning. My name is Olivia Thompson. I live at three twenty-five, Twelfth Street Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one one. I first came down to thank the mayor for cutting all the lights and cleaning up our neighborhood. It looks so much better, even the employees at Princeton Hospital. So they are proud to come through there now. They don't get a gloom and doom when they get off work and be tired. And another thing I have, all of you have flyers. Birmingham Youth Fellowship Corp. present a youth and praise Christmas concert with eight Babolution and Kendra Studdamire. They will be in concert, a group of our young people from across the city of Birmingham. They have come together, they are different churches, but they have come together, and if they can come together, we can come together and go out and support our young people and show them that we are proud of them. They are doing a concert, it's gonna be a toy drive. They are taking up toys for needed children, and they are sponsoring families for our Christmas. And we want the people to come out, especially the city council. Show your support for our children in Birmingham. If they can come together, all of us should be able to come together and show them that we support them and we admire what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Cedric Hatcher.
Uh, good morning. My name is Cedric Hatcher. I reside at twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North. I want to go ahead and be obedient. Father, we just come right now in the name of Jesus. Father, we bow in the demonic spirit. Father, what's going on down here? Father, we bow in division in this house, Father God. Father, you said our kingdom divided won't stand, our house divided won't stand. Father, we actually the church healing deliver right now. Father, you're God of forgiveness, Father God. Touch the heart of man, Father God. Father, sometime we fall down, but you say you'll pick us back up, and we'll give you all the glory, all the praise, and we do it in Jesus' name by saying amen. Hey, this morning, just want to have a little brief conversation, y'all. First of all, just want to tell Google, Uwe, whatever the full name is, congratulations on their accomplishments. And then want to tell Publix on Twentieth Street, congratulations also on the grocery store. Then want to talk about them fifty restaurants going up and down Twentieth Street. Congratulations also on all those restaurants. And by them six hotels downtown, congratulations. Man, we got some great stuff going on downtown Birmingham. But if we had ten percent of that stuff going on close town, we'll have a different city.
Is that right?
If we just had ten percent of it going on close town, we'll have a different city, y'all. You know, I just think it's sad for a city led by most of African-Americans on Fourth Avenue, there's not a brick being turned over. A.G. Gaston built around there on the ground, there's not a brick being turned over, and all this work going on. I just think it's a disgrace. I know tax revenue, y'all. I've been around here a couple of years now. I know it take tax revenue to run a city. But what cost do I sell, my folks? You know what I mean? Just for thought, not for how. You remember old Paul, old John, uh, John was under the land hands? And they say, hey, man, can we give you a little money for that gift? And they said, no, take your money and go to hell. At some point, we gotta stand, y'all. Because see, like, some prosper, and the rest don't make. The minority ain't going nowhere in this city. We promised them, hey, I'll come over there and tear your old house down for you. I cut your grass. Knowing that grass don't grow right- I cut your grass, knowing that grass don't grow right back. We gotta stop this here, y'all, 'cause this ain't justice. Go use one scripture today, do Romans twenty-five verse fifteen. He said, make sure your scales be right. No injustice, bro, Steve, you know what I mean? Don't put the wrong stuff on the scale, because that ain't right. God is against injustice, y'all, and it's just sad, you know what I mean? And we keep looking like we going for, we going for. In the spirit of Dr. King, Fred Shutterworth, A.G. Gaston, what would they think about the day in Birmingham? What would they think, y'all? All that historical stuff that happened on Fourth Avenue, that's not nothing now, now. Ain't even a green bicycle thing on that street. You know them little cute little bikes y'all got out there? It is not now one of them on Fourth Avenue. No, at one point, did we stop selling our soul? And it's sad, somebody gotta speak out. Stand up, wake up, speak up. Somebody gotta do it, y'all, because all y'all, most of y'all faces down here like mine. I hate racists at any level, but at some point, we gotta stop selling our soul, y'all. Because I think when the plan is all over, somebody gonna hit the road, Jack, and don't come back. No more. And it's just sad, y'all, we gotta stop this stuff, man. It ain't right at no cost. How much do it cost to sell your soul? You know what I mean, if I can't justice for all, forget the rest of y'all. No, and that Lear Theater, that pretty big old theater y'all got down there, they've been working on that building about a year and a half. And guess what they got in front of them now, a big old boat, telling, we coming next year. When next year gonna get it? Be y'all out, all that money. Think them folks really care anything about you? Do you really think they do? Now, Dr. King put it this way in my closing, he said in nineteen sixty-three, a hundred years later, the Negro is not free. Bring it up to the date, it's a hundred fifty-two years. The Negro is not free. Arthur Winfrey ain't free. Barack Obama ain't free. Michael Jordan, not free. People in this city hall, not free. We gotta wake up, y'all. I know you wanna go along to get along, but at some point, you gotta stand up.
Is that right?
Hot of my shit.
Hey, they know I'm close.
I'm closing, y'all, it's just sad.
Also, if you will, the gentleman that keeps opening the door, please, control the outbursts in the chamber.
But now, don't forget, I laid a prayer first, I prayed for y'all first.
Mr. Hatcher?
Mr. Posteen.
I did that in obedience.
Mr. Posteen, hold on, Ms. Hatcher.
Counsel Hore?
Yeah, well, I, I think he raised an interesting point, and I have not paid attention to it. But I do, I do not see the bicycles in that area. The bicycles that they have-
On Fourth Avenue?
On Fourth Avenue. And it's quite a busy area.
Yeah, you do.
Oh, you do? Oh, they got another phase, okay, so they're coming.
Phase, the second phase coming.
Okay, they're coming.
Okay. They coming, by the time A.G. Gaston be, when it's coming? How many more years will be for that?
It's being worked on, Pastor Sett, as we speak.
All right, very good, okay.
Willie Jenkins is next.
Next speaker, Ms. Clerk, thank you.
Okay.
Willie Jenkins, Santa Claus would like to say, Merry Christmas, ho, 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 Merry Christmas to all the city councils, including the mayor. And I would like to say, on the night, William Park will be at your District Four. And also, Lisa Banks, her son passed away, Mr. Park, we need another, uh, uh, Reverend Banks daughter's gonna be this Saturday, this weekend. Also, my birthday coming up on the corner of December. Also, we're gonna have a red and a blue ball, Carver High School, District Four. We gonna have December the coi- December the twenty-third at, 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 uh, Carver High, Carver High School. We gonna honor these, they gonna honor Mr. Means, they gonna have the Hall of Fame. They want everybody to come out, District Four to come out in the Hall, in the Hall of Fame at, uh, Carver on the twenty-third. Also, Sunday, we'll be at Jackson Street Baptist Church, Men of Praise. Also, Santa Claus will be there at, uh, Jackson Street Baptist Church this Sunday at, uh, three o'clock. Also, Mr. Park, we have our Christmas program, December nineteenth, at Oak Street Baptist Church. And we'd like to see you to come, and, uh, they'd like to say, um, I'd, I hope everybody in District Four of Collisville have a ho, ho, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And God can bless you, District Four, and, uh, and, uh, also, also the Rams, the mighty Rams, congratulate the mighty Carver High School, uh, Carver High School Rams. So, they had their program at Belfer's, Council, yesterday, uh, Sunday at Belfer. And Carver High School Choir, they did a match fascinating job. And also, my family, once, my family, London Jenkins, all to my family, Leon, London West, and, uh, and Anthony, would say, all my family, will wish them a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, like I said, we'll be at Patton Park tonight, and also, uh, tonight.
Santa Claus, I got one question for you. Is that a new Santa Claus outfit for this year?
Yeah, yeah.
I can tell, that white is pretty white on you, son, I like the new beard.
Okay.
That's a good look, Santa Claus.
All right, Merry Christmas, ho, 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 Merry Christmas, ho, 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 Merry Christmas.
I like it. Thank you, thank you so much.
Mayor Krill, Mayor King, his wife, Merry Christmas, ho, ho, ho.
All right. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk. Ms. King, please state your name, address for the record, you have three minutes.
James King, thirty-five fifty-four Church Street, Dolomite. Y'all want my phone number?
Name, address.
Okay, 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 all right. Eight four one one. But, uh, today, I'm coming today to talk about the tragedy that happened off Ten Mill Road with United States Steel Corporation, Alabama Power, and one hundred and sixty, well, let me, let me see, sixty million dollars, sixty million votes for one blast furnace, and another sixty million for another blast furnace, where little kids gonna play up under the power line. This is about one of the dumbest thing I ever seen. And as I came on the scene of, off of Ten Mill Road, I seen several council people. And I said some powerful words, and I should've said some other words that I shouldn't have said. But reckless disregard for all, anything that happened. I think this council has failed to do its duty and obligations. They should've checked with people like myself and other law firms that already sued United States for the rampant violation of environmental care. I grew up in Dolomite community, that's my residence. In the nineteen sixty's, fifty's, seventy's, they killed everything that swam, flew, walked, crawled, could even go into a hole. Poisoned the environment, and then they come back after, after a year out and trailer have them in a lawsuit, that they poisoned the whole environment, doubled down, and they come and build this huge Frankenstein electrical grid, one hundred and twenty million votes. And little children gonna play out there up under the power line next to a park. And nobody could see that happening? You worried about jobs? Oh, three hundred jobs, that's about as many as this council laid off last year. Laid off, nobody said a word about that, but you weren't worried about that, what you worried about, you are still laying off people. Pratt City, it's a disgrace, folks. I know, I know, I, I know, this, this is, Santa Claus is coming, coming on thirty-first. Gross incompetence of government has caused us to lose twenty-five million dollars. Tuscaloosa put us to shame. Gross incompetence, where you lose that money in the poorest section of the city, not even a grocery store. And then everything is fine, this is a lovely city, until you hear, move, move, move! Mr. Mayor, whatever happened to you, you probably got what you deserved.
Next speaker, Ms. Clerk, William R. Muhammad. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
William R. Muhammad, four eleven Lorang Street, to the council and the mayor, mayor representative. I came up here about two weeks ago, and I happened to be sitting in the audience when Reverend Herman Henderson came up and, to my opinion, denigrated the movement Black Lives Matter. He happened to repeat after denigrating Black Lives Matter that all lives matter. And I just wanted to come up here today to say that's a liberal white response. And as Dr. King said, white liberals are more dangerous than rabid racists. Black Lives Matter started after the Trayvon Martin killing. A sister named Alicia Gaza wrote a love letter to the black community on Facebook, and she ended it by saying, our lives matter. It went out as a Twitter hashtag Black Lives Matter, and that began a movement. The philosophy of Black Lives Matter, and I'm not representing them, is that they are against extrajudicial killing by police and vigilantes. All lives matter is a trivializing of the struggle of black people against the historic structural racism suffered by black people. To say that all lives matter is implying that black suffering and white suffering is equal. I just wanna call roll in my ending. That was Trayvon Martin, Eric Garner, and Mike Brown. After Mike Brown, though, in August, you had Isaiah Ford, Kate Garland, Tamile Rice. You had Romaine Brisbane, Jermaine Reed. You had Jeremy Lett, Levon Hall, Thomas Allen. You had Nikias Benson. You had Tony Robertson, Anthony Hill, Bobby Gross, Brandon Jones, Eric Harry, Walter Scott. And Walter Scott was the black man shot in the back that they showed on TV. You had Frank Shepard, William Chapman, David Felix. You had Brendan Glenn, Chris Jackson, Spencer McCain, Victor Emmanuel Rosa, Savano Ellsworth. You had Albert Davis, Darius Stewart, Samuel DuVose, and Christian Taylor. And since then, you've had several other killings. And in fact, it's reported in the Final Call newspaper, on the front page, that in Oakland, I think it was this week or last week, a man was shot, a black man was shot in the back with his hands up in Oakland as he was executed by a firing squad. So, we have to be, what was their name? Kendrick Chapel. We have to be very careful when we accept the trivializing of the racism we face by repeating that, all lives matter.
Please, no outbursts in the chambers at this time, we have so- Sir, I said no outbursts in the chamber at this time. Thank you, Ms. Muhammad, appreciate it. Next item of, uh-
That concludes.
On the agenda, that concludes the business, uh, older new business. Okay, Counsel Tyson, please proceed and go into your announcements after that.
Okay, Ms. Walker at Garrison Avenue, she's eighty years old. The city repaired her roof on her house. And she talked to Mr. Brick and Staff, and the roof have been leaking now for almost a year. I went over there, it's, it's just horrible, mold everywhere. Her floors have buckled from the roof leaks. And she have not been able to get anyone from community development to come out or get the repair company that did it through their repair grant, to come out and actually fix the problem that she's having. She stay at twenty-eight thirteen Garrison Avenue Southwest. I have her phone number and everything else, Mr. Patton, but it's, she's in bad shape. She's eighty years old, she's on dialysis, she has diabetes, she's, uh, she's in a wheelchair. And I just don't understand how this could happen within a year, all this time, no one have came out and seen. And she have all the phone calls at times, and who she talked to, and everything, and this problem have not been resolved for this lady. Also, at twenty, twenty-four forty-one Twenty-Ninth Street, a lot next door to that house needs cutting really bad. Also, at tw- at two thirty, Twenty-Second Street Southwest, it's five houses that's empty that need cutting on that street, and six houses that's behind her that need cutting on her, on that street. This lady right here is seventy years old, and she was held by, um, gun.
We need a car.
We need a car. We still, Counsel Hore still here, go ahead, I'm sorry.
She was held by a gun, and, and someone jumped out the bushes, you know, and, and pulled a gun out of her and robbed her at that, uh, resident, and something needed to be done. On thirteen twenty-five and thirteen twenty-nine Elmwood Street Southwest. This lot has been reported for the last five years. I tracked down the numbers, that referral numbers, and, but no one have been out to cut it. And I went out there and I found a newspaper that was five years old out there. So, I'm quite sure if they cut that lot, they'd have cut the newspaper, that piece of newspaper. And it's just, that just, it's something gotta be done about that. I just really just felt bad about that when the, uh, resident, uh, actually, uh, reported it to me. Okay, on tomorrow, December the sixteenth, Gray Mount Neighborhood would be meeting at four-thirty at the Smithfield Library. The nineteenth of December, uh, North Tittysville will be meeting at eleven a.m. at the Tittysville Library. Tonight, from five to eight, at the Civil Rights Foot Soldier, uh, uh, building on Fourth Avenue, uh, North. They will be having a, their annual Christmas social, social. Uh, the address is seventeen oh seven Fourth Avenue North. Also, the, uh, the annual dinner at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church Fellowship Hall starts at one P.M. And as, um, this is twenty years old, and I would like for everyone that's on the city council, y'all are welcome to come out and participate, uh, in this event. And I would like, if we, do we have another meeting before Christmas? We do have another, okay, well, I say that Merry Christmas to everybody. Birmingham Youth Fellowship Choir presents their youth praise, uh, uh, Christmas concert. That will be Saturday, December the nineteenth, from five, at five P.M. at Tittysville A.O.H. Church of God, five oh six Fourth Court West. Uh, also, the, uh, bring with you a, um, a, uh, boy to join the, uh, Boy Scouts, uh, for their holiday social. Uh, that will be Saturday the nineteenth from one P.M. to four P.M. at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church on Martin Luther King Drive. We will have, um, food, um, games, arts and crafts, a whole lot of things that can actually, uh, to actually get these, uh, young men involved. Also, first, um, South Side Baptist Church on Pearson Ave, South Side, what is that, uh, Jay?
South Park.
Sa- South Park Baptist Church will actually be having a, their Christmas concert. It will be Thursday at six o'clock, and we're asking for everyone to come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tyson, Ms. Patton.
Uh, Counselor Tyson, your opening statement, I think you said that the city repaired the roof?
Yeah, it was-
I don't think the city repaired the roof, I think it was a company.
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the critical grant program, the roof was repaired.
But it wasn't by the city?
No, it wasn't by, but it was through the city program and community development. But it was a year ago. And the damage that was done, I'm talking about her total house is just messed up. Uh, it-
We're looking to it.
Bleed down the walls, her, her floors has buckled, and now she has to find somewhere else to stay. At, because, you know, she's just on a fixed income, so we're gonna try to move her over in, uh, Drew Hill. We found an apartment over there, in a, in a rental house, so she's gonna go look at those today.
Thank you, yes ma'am, we're looking to it.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Patton, Counsel Parker?
Uh, thank you. The Park Board will be meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock at Legion Field. And also, we want to encourage everyone to participate in the Birmingham Bowl on December thirtieth with Auburn versus Memphis at eleven a.m., so, that's my report.
You're ready tonight?
Uh, well, Mr. Jenkins had already talked about the District Four, so, we'll leave that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you, Counsel Parker. Counsel Hore?
I, I don't have anything.
Counsel Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education Committee is now accepting resumes for four library board appointments. Resumes can be submitted to City Hall, to my attention, you can send a letter, send an email, however you want to get it here, have a friend drop it by, but we need some good folks to fill these vacancies on the library board. The Education Committee is going to meet next on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, at two P.M. in the afternoon in Conference Rooms D and E. Last week, I did get to attend the press conference for the Birmingham Bowl, and I had never met Gus Malzahn before from my alma mater, so that was a lot of fun to go to that, and I appreciate Counsel Roberson, uh, letting me know about that opportunity. It was, it was fun, despite the fact that we had to wait a long time because Auburn had to drive. Their plane broke down. But anyway, so, the international holiday celebration this year was really a lot of fun. The Saturday cleanup at the Avondale Park was held this past Saturday to get ready for Christmas, to make sure the park looks nice and clean. And we want to thank the people who came out to help pick up trash in the park. After we finished, it looked really good, I hope it still looks good today. This week, the Five Points South neighborhood is having its holiday celebration at the Hassenger Daniels Mansion on Highland Avenue. That is a bed and breakfast, and every year, they host the holiday party for the neighborhood, but everyone in Five Points South is invited. The City Council Service Day with Community Kitchens is this Saturday, and we will be serving lunch to the residents in that area. And last year, we had to make up recipes at the last minute of food to cook, so that was really interesting, to try to, you know, cook for two hundred people and make your recipes expand bigger and bigger, but it was interesting. And this Sunday at four P.M., there is a carol singing. And, um, at the Triangle Park in Forest Park, South Avondale, Santa Claus will come on a fire truck. And, um, all the kids will get to, he's a wonder, he is, he is the Santa Claus, of course, but he's a wonderful Santa Claus. So, I hope that everyone can attend that. So, I hope that everyone can attend that, it's free, they have hot chocolate and, and donuts, uh, along with the carol singing and Santa Claus coming, so it's a lot of fun. And there are no neighborhood meetings this week, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott, um, I have a few announcements to make. I first wanna, uh, congratulate, uh, Derrick Henry, uh, running back for the University of Alabama, uh, on the Heisman Trophy, uh, that he received, uh, this past weekend. Uh, his speech was truly humbling, uh, and the gratitude that he gave, uh, the fans, Coach Saban, also, uh, his eighty-one-year-old grandmother, who was at the hospital, uh, with his family, uh, to receive that war, award was truly amazing. So he's first one to win, I think, the Heisman Trophy, also the Maxwell Award, and other great, uh, college accolades, and congratulations to, uh, Derrick Henry. I also received my Heisman Trophy, uh, on this Saturday, so that was a good seg, that was a good segue, wasn't it? Uh, but I am so thankful, and I was truly honored and humbled to receive this honor, uh, from the Winona Young Dragons, the Little League Football Program in my district. And to get acknowledged, uh, for work that you really don't think you're doing much for the young people, and to get acknowledged is truly tremendous. So I wanna thank, uh, all the football players, uh, for the Winona Young Dragons, all the, uh, cheerleaders for the Winona Young Dragons, all the, um, coaches that sacrificed their time to, to steer our young people in the right way and mentor them through the game of football, and to the board members, Abdu Awahheg, uh, to all the board members that are there with the Winona Young Dragons Football Program. Uh, it's truly tremendous, and I'm honored to receive this award to be an honorary, uh, Winona Young Dragon. So, thank you all so much, and thank you for the, uh, my Heisman Trophy, cause that's, that's what that means to me. So thank you so much. Also, thank you, Council. Also, uh, Winona Lady Dragons will take on the Pleasant Grove Spartans tonight, uh, at Pleasant Grove at six o'clock PM. They're ranked number fifteen in the nation, uh, number one to State of Alabama in class five A. And the Winona Boys will also play the Pleasant Grove Spartans tonight at seven o'clock. Uh, in the spirit of competition, and as we get ready for the bowl season, uh, there is a Turkey Cook-Off Bowl between myself and Councilor Hoyt, uh, for bragging rights again. And as I display my trophy today on the dais, uh, that is not my turkey trophy from last year. So I look forward to competing against my colleague from District Eight, cause we know how to make turkeys on the west side of Birmingham. And I look forward to that competition again the next forty-eight hours. There's one announcement, uh, I do need to make, Councils, we'd be reminded of the Sloss Furnace Visitation Luncheon today at Sloss Furnace at two o'clock PM, uh, there will also be a quick tour of the new visitor city, uh, center, rather, uh, at that time. Uh, if there's no other business at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, ma'am?
Second.
All in favor of Lady Winona saying, uh?
Uh, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
See, I might join, y'all.
Come on, come on, come on.
Come on.